Good evening. Welcome everyone to Monday, July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is now called to order. Please rise for the salute to the flag. Councilwoman Patel, would you do the salute to the flag? After this flag flew, please remain standing for a moment of silence for Julie Lada, who is the grandmother of Councilman Michael Murphy. May I be seated? Mrs. Kraus, would you please read the statement of public notice?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. Notice of the meeting is prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice is filed in the office of the township clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
President.
Councilmember Murphy.
President.
Councilmember Havlet.
President.
Councilmember Vancheri.
President.
Council President Scobha.
President. We're going to take the meetings, uh, minutes of the meetings at two separate motions. Have a motion to approve the meeting of June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilwoman Havlet's. Is that a, uh, that's a roll call. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes, kind of motion to approve the meeting, uh, minutes of the meeting of July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Moved by Councilmember Vancheri.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Patel. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Abstain. Mayor Dan Nino, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. A couple of updates this evening. The first having to do with Long Hill Road and the ongoing construction and water main improvement there. Uh, the contractor anticipates being finished with that project within about the next two weeks. Uh, they are moving actually ahead of schedule and schedule was they needed to be concluded with that work prior to the start of school this year because it would interrupt school too and the arrival there. Uh, and it would be an absolute nightmare. So they are moving well ahead of schedule. Uh, they do have a bunch of work that'll still work on some of the side roads as they connect the new main to the mains on those roads. But they are making progress, uh, as they continue there. Um, that work was being done primarily because we had a big section of town. Everything that was, uh, sort of to the north and, um, east side of Long Hill, Brower Town, Villa, lower notch, that entire section of town. Uh, they had issues with brown water for a lot of years. And the reason they were getting brown water is because their water was being fed from the reservoir that we have here locally. And believe it or not, we have five different sources of water to the township of Little Falls. That one seemed to be the biggest problem and there'd be frequent reports and complaints of brown water. And I would always be advised that the water quality met all drinking quality standards, that it was safe and that there were no health issues related to it. But the color of it would be off because of an additional mineral that would be in the water, usually during the summer during droughts. Uh, and although again, it was safe, I, I would constantly get complaints and understandably so that people don't want to bathe their children in brown water, that they don't want to wash their white clothes with brown water because it would stain them permanently. Uh, and, and I get it. It was a legitimate concern. And for a couple of years, I was putting pressure on New Jersey American Water, who this past year decided to invest several million dollars into the water main that is currently being installed up Long Hill Road. And this water will now come from to all these sections of town from the water tower that we have right here in town. Or seemingly right here in Little Falls, just, just outside of Little Falls. Uh, and it will hopefully resolve and solve all of the issues that we've had with brown water. Not to mention, I've already heard from people who have connections to the new main that their water pressure is much better because the old main, I believe was a six or an eight inch main and they've improved the size to a twelve inch main now. Uh, so water pressure is also something that people have noticed a substantial increase in. And, uh, so hopefully that this will resolve a number of issues that we've had in town. And I want to thank New Jersey American Water for investing in Little Falls. Uh, they have been good partners to us here with, uh, ensuring that their infrastructure remains up to date. Uh, it does also provide them with a benefit that the older mains are being replaced and are less likely to have water main breaks in the future, uh, especially during the colder months. So, uh, this is something that is appreciated by the residents of Little Falls. Uh, and I know there's been some interruptions. Again, uh, overall, I think the detour has been working out pretty well. As, as long as most people know about it ahead of time, uh, it seemed to have been a minimal issue. Uh, so thank you everyone for, for bearing with, uh, this water main improvement. Next, there was a mirror that was installed on Long Hill in an intersection where there was always a different, difficult line of sight. And as you approach the top of Francisco Ave where it intersects with Long Hill, there was a mirror that was installed there, one of those concave mirrors that allows you to see a greater range of sight so that people can have one more way to ensure that they are being safe when they're pulling out into that intersection. Uh, so that mirror was recently installed there and I want to thank Ronnie Campbell and his crew for getting that installed so quickly after it arrived. Uh, next, some streetscape updates. Uh, we will be moving some of the planters that are along Main Street because they were placed by the contractor in some inconvenient locations, meaning, uh, they placed a thousand pound concrete object just outside of where a car would park and a door may, may open. So our DPW is going to move them a little bit to put them between parking spaces to ensure that there's no damage to any vehicles or any issues with that and that people can get in and out of their vehicles safely. And then they are going to be filled with flowers in the upcoming, uh, week or two. So we will have those, uh, moving forward in the appropriate places, uh, to help also beautify the downtown. As far as the light poles that we are waiting for from PSE and G, it seems that they have two of the three sections that were recently completed on Main Street already delivered to them. They are just waiting to receive delivery of the third section uh, of Main Street before they install any of them. So we're hopeful that that will be in the near future. They will also be replacing all of the old Cobra heads that are on the current existing wooden poles to new decorative Cobra lighting with bulbs much like the ones on, on Maple Ave. So that'll be a major improvement once that all occurs. Unfortunately, I'm still fighting the good fight to get those wires all relocated either underground or behind, uh, our stores in the downtown section of Main Street. But it seems to be a, an uphill battle to say the least, to the point where the quotes we've received to put them underground just for several blocks is around twenty million dollars, uh, which is almost our annual budget here in Little Falls. So something that's not really feasible. Uh, or to potentially relocate them behind the stores. Again, still working to do that. Uh, it's not going to be an inexpensive endeavor and it's not something that's going to happen overnight. Uh, so that is something that we are still trying to nail down some final numbers on to see if that's something that we may be able to, to move forward with in the future. But it seems like that will be a multi, multi, multi-million dollar, uh, deal that would need to be had in order to make that happen. So unless there's other funding out there that would really assist in moving and relocating all of these poles and all of these wires, I just don't know that it's feasible for the municipality to take on that cost uh, for the improvement that it would result in. Uh, next update I have has to do with our streetscape a little bit more in that I know I've previously announced that we were awarded funding for Stevens Ave all the way up to Walnut. And that will be underway within the next several months as well as Main Street up to Van S Ave. Uh, but it looks like we were recently also awarded, uh, another grant for Union Ave and Main Street up to Montclair Ave. So that will be another major improvement that will continue our, our streetscape. Uh, eventually, as I've indicated, the goal is to get the streetscape to span uh, from the furthest west section of Main Street all the way to the furthest east section. And then up and down Stevens Ave and Patterson Ave and all of our main thoroughfares that people use to come to Little Falls. Uh, it will be a multi-year project. Um, but I'm pleased that we just received the letter in the mail today, although it was dated several weeks ago, uh, that awarded us another five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in grant funding for our streetscape. We don't know which exact section that that applies to, so we'll have to call and get confirmation from the state because their letter just says, congratulations, you've been awarded five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on the streetscape. So until we can figure out which section that is being applied to, um, the good news is we received over a half million dollars. Uh, that again, that may be for the Union and Main Street to Montclair Ave section or another section. Uh, but we are going to continue to pursue these grants and continue to beautify the streets of Little Falls here, especially if it is being funded largely by grants. Uh, that is all that I have for an update this evening, Council President, unless there's any questions from the council.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the mayor's report? Mayor, uh, with the wires, uh, are on Main Street, the inactive wires, the wires that are not being used. Those wires too, we do not have no recourse to have utilities, uh, Verizon, Optima take down.
So the issue is in all of the extra wires that you see on any of the poles in the downtown are wires associated with the low voltage companies. They're not PSE and G wires that are carrying electric. A lot of them are phone lines or internet lines or different things like that. Uh, and all of those unfortunately are abandoned by a company when they no longer use it. And because it is just abandoned, they are not claimed by anyone, meaning there's no person or entity that we can go after to have them removed. Uh, it has been something that I've been trying to address with our, our local senator, uh, Kristen Carrato. Unfortunately, um, nobody claims it's their wire. And because nobody claims it's their wire, there's nobody to, to go after. We will continue to try to do that because there are a number of poles that are probably over cluttered with low voltage wiring. But we're going to continue to pursue, uh, having somebody remove those wires, uh, depending on again, what avenues we may be able to find in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on. Council Wenzel.
I jumped, I know. Yeah, you jumped.
I know, it's okay.
I was paying attention. It's okay. Uh, just to piggyback real quick, uh, on the mayor's comment, I think a, a few years ago, it's issue came up with the, uh, leftover wires that are on telephone poles and sometimes you see them wound up and, uh, just sitting there. Uh, I had reached out to a couple of contacts at Verizon about it because those are, um, in essence, phone lines for the most part, uh, they're not electrical lines. And they have an agreement with PSE and G in essence to place the wires on the poles and go from pole to pole to get to the next, uh, service location. And Verizon, um, basically gave me the same line that the mayor just described. They basically said, well, when, you know, it's out of service and as we all know, a lot less people have landlines. So there's no reason for those lines. Everything is now, uh, being used with, uh, these new, um, nodules and nodes that you see on the telephone poles. So, uh, Verizon basically says, well, you know, we don't need it, so we just leave it. And we're not going to send our guys out to, to take it down. Really, it ultimately, I think the only, uh, answer to it is that as you've seen over time, PSE and G does go through and replaces some of these poles because of, uh, damage or new infrastructure. They want to put up so that it's more storm resilient poles. At that point, I have, they have unofficially removed the wires because they're not going to reattach wires that don't need to be reattached. But once again, you'd have to wait for all of those poles to be removed. So yes, it is, it is frustrating. I, I understand the mayor's concern, but there is no methodology by which we can force them to do otherwise because they're not our poles either. We may feel there are poles, but they're not. They're PSE and G's.
Thank you, Council. We'll move on to council reports. Council, uh, woman Havlet's.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, so first I'd like to again express my condolences to Councilman Murphy. Very sorry about your grandmother. Um, I'd like to give some updates for the library. Um, this Friday, Council President and I attended the library's event, Building Bridges, um, a celebration of Latin American culture. It was a really great event. Um, there was a lot of activity, a lot of people attended. Uh, there was a Latina bestselling author that, um, had a, uh, interview via Zoom. There was Latin food from Chapos, which is in Wilton Park. And there was the, um, Latin American music, uh, the drums by the, uh, folklore, uh, Latin American center of North Jersey. It was a great event. We had a great time. The food was great. Uh, there will be more building bridges that the library is going to sponsor, uh, coming up in the fall. Also, uh, myself and fellow council members, uh, I think we can all say we had a great time at Water Fun Fest. Uh, thank you to Councilman, uh, Vancheri and the rec center for keeping this event going. It was a fun time had by all. The kids were having a great time and the weather was great. So thank you very much. And this week we will be starting our outdoor movie nights again. Uh, thank you to Tyler Percero for working on this with me. Our first movie as per usual is Christmas in July. And this year we will be showing The Grinch. Um, the festivities will start at seven thirty and the movie will be at dusk. And we just may have a special guest. So come on down. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Havlet's. Councilman Murphy.
Thank you, Council President. I just first like to thank, um, the council and governing body for their condolences and moment of silence for my grandmother. Um, I really appreciate it. She loved this town. She loved the women's club here in town and, you know, she's definitely going to be missed. Um, quick update, uh, on domestic violence, prevention committee, uh, we were at the first half of the farmer's market, uh, yesterday. Uh, I'd like to thank the members that came out to help work the booth. They did a great job. Um, we're going to be moving our monthly meeting, which is usually the first Tuesday of every month, which was August first. We're now moving that to Wednesday, August second, because we do have, uh, Amer- uh, National Night Out on August first, Tuesday. So we're going to be moving that. So anybody that wants to attend that meeting, we're moving it to the Wednesday, same time, same location, uh, seven PM Town Hall upstairs, but I just wanted to make a note that we are moving that meeting. Um, what else I'd like to say, we had a great time on Saturday. I don't think I've ever seen Councilman Vancheri so happy in my life. He was locked and loaded with three water guns at all times. So it was, it was something to see. Um, other than that, that's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Murphy, can you, uh, follow up with our townwide calendar and Councilwoman Havlet's would, uh, if you would follow up as well, where we stand?
Yeah. So right now we're just in the process of getting all the advertisements in. I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Pace on Saturday. Uh, maybe to get a lot more in. Uh, I believe he said we're pretty much at like fifty percent sold at this point and Council, Councilwoman could come on that. Um, so they're going quick, which is good. So, uh, the goal was, I believe, twelve full size and six half sized ads, um, and we're pretty much fifty percent sold in them already. So it's going good and we're making progress on it.
Is there anything else you'd want to follow up on that?
Um, no, that's it. Uh, just that we are doing well. It is been, it has been posted, uh, on the website and you can contact the rec center if you would like to have an ad. Uh, we are at this time staying with businesses within Little Falls. Um, if for any reason we don't sell out, then we will offer it to businesses outside of Little Falls.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Vancheri.
Thanks, Council President. Uh, for the record too, this past Saturday with Water Fest, I was the only one I think that got the memo to participate because my three colleagues here came dressed in their council shirts and dressed to not get wet. So when you're surrounded by thirty young kids from town with their water guns blazing, ready to shoot you and my three colleagues like, I'm not getting wet, I'm leaving. So next year, please make sure that you are ready. Go to Target, Walmart, wherever to buy your water guns because I'll make sure there's thirty kids to greet you guys when you get there. Now, but I, I do want to say the Water Fest, uh, this past Saturday was great. We had an unbelievable crowd. And then my former colleagues here, he started this three years ago and appreciate that. Um, it was just a really good time to see all the kids and their parents. I mean, you know, like Councilman Murphy said, we all felt like little kids that day where, you know, you gotta have some fun. You jump on a slide with your kids and your friends and you have a good time. Um, kudos to the rec department, Tyler Percero and John Pace did a great job of pulling it all together because they actually did it for two days in a row. If you think about it, because with camp the previous day, it was also water day. So the kids got to, most kids got to experience it twice. And then of course, thanks to the, uh, Little Falls Fire Department for coming, you know, it was great to see, uh, the guys up on the ladder, you know, just kind of hosing everybody down. It was also historical seeing Mrs. Vancheri get clobbered and go flying. So that was, uh, another highlight on top of it. But again, it was just a great day, uh, for everyone. And we're looking forward already to next year. Uh, I got a bunch of updates on my end and I just want to go through if you guys don't mind. Um, you know, we just had a transportation, uh, committee, uh, meeting about a week and a half ago. We were talking about a number of different things that are in the hopper that we're waiting on. But the one thing that we did discuss that I'm working with, uh, Chief Proll as well as Officer Panola is to pull together an event in September. We did this prior to COVID where we had, uh, former Lieutenant Briggs and also Detective Moncato come in to do sort of a traffic education one-on-one type seminar. Talk about some different things, some reminders, especially with school, uh, coming up. So we're just looking to coordinate that in September. We're just, we want to make sure that the date works for everyone. And we're probably going to have members from AAA and possibly the county join us. It's just a nice way to bring everybody together, talk about a few things and answer some questions. And now too, with the new, um, portal that's been set up by the police department to handle any kind of requests that are traffic related. It's a good chance to spend some time with residents to help educate them. So more to come. We're hoping to have the date finalized, uh, sometime this week because my goal is to have some flyers printed out so that we could hand them out at National Night Out, which as Councilman Murphy mentioned, is on August first. So that's right outside over here. Uh, for those of you at home and those of you in the room, it's always worth it. You get a chance to meet all the different, uh, clubs and committees that are involved in town, spend some time with the fire department as well as the, uh, police department. You know, sample some of the equipment. You know, the kids always love taking a tour of the, the building and going to visit the jail. So, um, you know, don't forget about that on the first. So more to come. Then a couple of other things I did want to mention was, uh, a couple of months ago, I had talked about, um, how myself and Arnie Karak, and I think Arnie is on the line as well. Um, he had, Arnie had reached out about the nine eleven museum and memorial organization. They have something in place where one of the, um, trees that was saved after the terrorist attacks on September eleventh, they were able to salvage it and based on that have been pulling together seeds over the years. And each year, three different communities that have had a connection to nine eleven are given the opportunity to apply to get one of the seeding, uh, trees. And fortunately, you know, we applied a couple of months ago, you know, we weren't sure if it was going to happen. But last week I got an email from the nine eleven memorial letting us know that we are going to receive one of the seeding trees. So I had a chance to connect with the mayor last week as well as Ron Campbell from the DPW department because now that we have been granted the tree, we're going to work to obviously pick it up. We have to go to Flushing Queens. Uh, that's where the tree right now is being grown. So we're going to pick that up. And we're connecting with the nine eleven museum because there's a process in place, not only picking up the tree and then how to maintain it and plant it, especially with the weather, the way it is. And then we're also going to coordinate a, uh, sort of dedication once we confirm the location. So it, it's a great thing, you know, to add to Wilmore, uh, road park, especially near our nine eleven memorial. So more details will come on that, but it is again, it's something that, you know, we're excited about. And again, thank you, Mr. Karak, and for bringing that, uh, to my attention. It worked out nicely. Uh, that's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Vancheri. Uh, good work on getting the tree and I'm sure, you know, we'll be careful in how we plant it because we certainly don't want to, um, with the extreme heat and conditions that we're currently having, have an issue with the, uh, tree, uh, growing in the near future.
Yeah, and that's why too, we asked Council President if we can wait a few more weeks and they're happy with us picking it up in August.
Good.
So that we don't do it right now with the heat wave.
Good. Councilwoman Patel.
Thank you, Council President. Um, so there were a few questions about whether or not Little Falls received a community health assessment, which Clifton does have. Um, so I spoke with Mr. Beagle from the Clifton Health Department. The contract that we have with Clifton does not include a community health assessment, uh, mostly because it is very costly. It's not part of a day-to-day service that they provide. However, Little Falls is part of the community health assessment that's conducted by State County. So once that's completed, we'll get information on that. Um, I know that recently the Clifton Health Department was, received a grant for which they purchased certain barricades for the DPW. So that was received by Little Falls. And then they're looking to coordinate additional vascular screening, um, in collaboration with the Center for Bean Restoration. So as soon as I get those dates, I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Can you elaborate on what, uh, for those listening and in the audience, the health assessment, um, with that entails?
So essentially what Clifton did was they had different surveys that were sent out and disseminated throughout Clifton, the city of Clifton. And based on the responses, they identify usually three to four target areas on where they want to improve, um, health education, services provided, et cetera. And then they come up with a comprehensive plan on how to achieve those goals. So although Little Falls doesn't, sorry, although Clifton does not do that for Little Falls, we will get similar information from State County. And then I will speak with, uh, Mr. Beagle from the Clifton Health Department to see what services we need here in Little Falls.
Good. Definitely keep us abreast of that. If we need to take a different course of action, please let the council know.
Yes, thank you, Council President.
I think it's about time that the township of Little Falls recognize the thirty servicemen that perished in line of duty for their country. So this council, along with the mayor and the staff, is going to be putting up banners for those thirty servicemen, um, along Main Street. The actual banner and the actual locations, whether it'll be on our decorative pole or on the telephone poles in discussion. And I'll be working with the Assistant Business Administrator Vincent Cartron to, uh, gather all the information, get the pictures and move that program forward. The idea would be to put them up, uh, sometime before Memorial Day and keep them up throughout, uh, Labor Day. The second part of this would be to then put up banners for active and retired service personnel. Uh, this part of the program would probably be based on donations, whether it be from the families, businesses or residents of the towns. And that would be the second phase of the program. So those that perished and those that are active and retired. I'd like to talk about, uh, a few items, uh, council. I'm sorry. Cynthia Kraus, uh, Mrs. Kraus, can you give me an idea of how many OPA requests you received for the year?
Um, okay, so in, in the last year, um, we've received just over eight hundred OPA requests. For, um, two thousand and twenty-three to date, we've received, um, just over four hundred. Um, so we're doing about, about fifteen to twenty per week that we're processing.
Now, I know the police department is probably respond, probably gets about one third of those OPA requests because for different lawyers, et cetera, court cases, uh, so. But with my calculations, about four hundred are probably the other departments. And how many pages each is that OPA request you say?
Um, it's, it's hard to say because they're all different. The motor vehicle accident reports are definitely, I mean, at least ten, fifteen, sometimes twenty pages or more, um, per request. And like I said, then we have the building department requests where they're, they're requesting permit fee log and they're requesting, um, copies of open and closed permits. So that can be arranged as well. Um, and sometimes they're just requesting, you know, different things from our office are requesting contracts. So it, it, it all depends. It could be, you know, small, two pages, three pages, or it could be twenty pages, thirty pages, just depending on what they're looking for.
So quite a lot of pages, over eight thousand pages of, of work. Um, have you seen open requests rise since you've been at this, uh, in the township of Little Falls or?
Yes, absolutely.
And, uh, do you think that's because of, um, what would you attribute that to?
Um, I, I think, honestly, I think that because people don't have to pay for the requests and they can get everything electronically, it's, it's just a lot easier to request the information and, you know, have it at, you know, in an email and not have to pay for anything and just put the request in you and you have it.
And it's a state statute that we can't charge for open requests?
So we can charge for open requests, the, a paper copy, but everybody, everybody requests it electronically because they know that they don't have to pay for it electronically.
Thank you for that information. Does council have any questions regarding that? I, I want to move on to, um, Mr. Kucha, can we talk about taxes, property taxes?
Certainly can.
Um, can you tell, uh, this governing body, uh, what the outstanding taxes are at this point?
So each year we have an annual audit. Uh, at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, our taxes, our delinquent taxes were about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Three hundred and ten thousand of that relates to a state tax court appeal that we have with Moncler State University. So that's got to go through the court system before we can resolve that. That left six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of current delinquent taxes. To date, we've already collected five hundred and twelve thousand of that. Six forty-seven leaves us one hundred and thirty-five thousand at this point in time. That was the link from year end. Remember, we will collect all of it eventually, uh, either through regular collections or through the lien process. We only have a hundred thousand dollars in liens at this point in time. So analytically, if you look at that, most people eventually pay for their ta- pay their taxes. Some of it may be late and we do collect interest on them.
So we really don't have a residential property tax issue. It's more of a commercial and.
Uh, yes.
Would you like to talk about the audit, Mr. Kucha?
Absolutely. Um, so at, uh, year end, uh, both the financial opinion and the internal control opinion from our independent auditor were clean and presented fairly. The financial. were clean and presented fairly the financial position of the township. That's the first criteria that we need to make sure that we meet the requirements of the state. At year end, we ended with six point three million dollars in cash and three point seven million dollars in fund balance. We already talked about the taxes receivable and the comments that were made, which were management comments, not related to the opinion, solely were specific to the municipal court, which we've presented the corrective action plan. It's a minor comment.
So since the council received the audit reports this evening, I encourage you to look them over. Give me a call, if it's necessary, we'll bring in Mr. Wilcox and we will have him come in to answer our questions at the next meeting. Are we comfortable with that? Mayor, do you have anything you want to add on the audit?
I do, Council President, specifically related to the taxes this year. We are waiting for final certification right now from the county. However, it appears as though Little Falls total taxes to individual homeowners this year and businesses, well, actually, we will have a tax decrease in Little Falls for this year.
By how much, Mayor?
So it is not a substantial, substantial decrease, but I think this day and age, any decrease is a major win. A home assessed somewhere in the four hundred thousand dollar range will probably see a decrease somewhere between fifteen and twenty dollars on the on the year. So we will not have a tax increase in Little Falls this year, largely attributable to a lot of the new rateables that we have, a lot of the new revenue that they are generating for us. And I know that I gave my word to residents six and seven years ago when I was initially running to become mayor, that I would do everything I could to stabilize taxes here in Little Falls because it was the number one concern that was always presented to me time and time again. And this will be the second tax decrease that we will have in my now seventh budget that I have prepared. So this will have a, again, tremendous benefit to stabilizing taxes, which is something that I have always said that I would focus on. I never promised decreases, but stabilizing taxes I have. And this year, I believe, will go a long way towards stabilizing them into the future as well. In fact, just crunching some numbers very quickly, it appears that in the seven years worth of budgets that I have prepared, Little Falls residents would have seen in all seven years a total tax increase of somewhere about two point eight percent in all seven years total. That's not a per-year increase, that is a total increase of about two point eight percent in set, over a seven-year period. So I can certainly say that I believe the cost of everything else around us has gone up a whole heck of a lot more than two point eight percent over that seven-year period. The one thing that I can help control is taxes and I certainly believe that all of these stable and decreased budgets, as far as taxes go, certainly help people keep money in their pocket to put food on the table and do all of those things.
And decrease is always good to hear, Mayor. What about the residents who always say, Mayor, you know, my taxes are going up every year when they get their tax bill?
Yeah, so the first tax bill that residents received this year will have indicated that there's a tax increase that will be expected over the course of this year. It was, it was a nominal, nominal increase that was anticipated because the very first tax bill that goes out after a budget is passed is just that, an anticipated tax bill. It's an estimate, I should say, it's an estimated tax bill for the upcoming quarters. The next tax bill that people will receive for their November first taxes will have a clear delineated number of taxes that they will be paying in it. That is the one where they will actually begin to see the tax decrease compared to prior years. So again, very exciting news. I know a couple of years ago, somebody said to me, oh, the taxes only went down ten dollars on my home this year, thanks a lot. And I almost fell out of my chair because I don't know how many people can say that their taxes have gone down. Usually, people are happy with small increases. I've never seen someone disgruntled over a decrease, but now I think I've seen it all. This year is another one of those years where we have a decrease, again, not huge, but definitely a step in the right direction.
In this tough economic time, anyone who runs a household or pays any type of bills recognizes the cost of how things go up and the cost of replacement costs. So a decrease is quite great news for our residents, thank you, Mayor. We're going to have a meeting change, September eleventh will not, we will not hold our meeting. The ceremonies of September eleventh, I got a little bit more expanded. I made the decision, we'll move that to September eighteenth and we'll have what we call back-to-back meetings that month. It's not something I'd like to do, but upon reviewing some of the ceremonies on September eleventh, I didn't want to be crunched for time to start the meeting at seven. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only. Move by Councilman Van Cherry, second by Councilwoman Havitz, this is a voice vote, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries, Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, however, if appropriate, it may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, the floor is now open. Mr. Kushya, anyone in the chat? Anyone in council chambers? Seeing no one come before us, have a motion to close the public. Move by Councilwoman Patel.
Second.
Second by Councilman Van Cherry, voice vote. All those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move by Councilwoman Havitz.
Second.
Second by Councilman Murphy. This is a roll call, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scova?
Yes, Mrs. Kraus, read ordinance fourteen sixty-five.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen sixty-five and ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Construction of a New EMS Building in By &amp; For the Township of Little Falls in the County Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of one million eight hundred thousand dollars to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you. The public hearing on ordinance fourteen sixty-five is now open, does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Kushya? I see no one in the council chambers. The public hearing on fourteen sixty-five is now closed. Have a motion to adopt, this is to adopt fourteen sixty-five. Well, well, this is a roll call. Right, idea motion, I'm sorry. Have a motion to adopt fourteen sixty-five.
So moved.
Move by Councilwoman Havitz. Second by Councilman Van Cherry, please call the roll to adopt fourteen sixty-five.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scova?
Yes, Mrs. Kraus, read fourteen sixty-six.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number fourteen sixty-six and ordinance entitled Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls, County Passaic, State of New Jersey, further amending the Township of Little Falls Code, Chapter Seven, Article One, Section seven dash forty, parking prohibitions on municipal and board of education property.
The public hearing on fourteen sixty-six is now open, does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Kushya? Seeing no one here. The public hearing on fourteen sixty-six is now closed. Can I have a motion to adopt fourteen sixty-six?
So moved.
Move by Councilwoman Patel?
Second.
Second by Councilman Van Cherry, this is a roll call to adopt fourteen sixty-six.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scova?
Yes, have a motion to open the meeting for the public for general matters?
So moved.
Move by Councilwoman Havitz?
Second.
Second by Councilman Murphy, miss, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record, comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, it may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, the floor is now open. Mr. Kushya, anyone? Aliyah, I don't want to put you on the spot, but there's five Passaic Valley alumni up here. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what you've been doing and since you graduated?
Hi, my name is Aliyah Hubei. I graduated from PV. Oh, I didn't know if the mic worked.
Yeah.
My name is Aliyah Hubei, I graduated from PV in two thousand and eighteen. I did my bachelor's at political science, at political science, at Seaton Hall in political science. And then I did my MPA, which I just graduated with this past May, which is a master's in public administration. And since then, I've just been looking for full-time employment, honestly. I didn't know how to say that. I've done some internships, I worked with the Office of Higher Ed on policy work. I've been at Newton and Melbourne, actually did a street lighting study for them because I wanted to convert to LEDs and I advised them not to, actually. So that is the field that I'm looking to go into and I'm a resident at Little Falls.
Great, thanks for coming up. As I walked in, reminded me that she was a student rep when I was on the Board of Education at Passaic Valley. So it's good to see you doing well.
Yeah, you as well.
Have a motion, motion to close the public?
So moved.
By Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman Van Cherry, all those that want to close the public do so by saying aye. All those opposed do so by saying nay. Thank you to the staff for helping put on this meeting, this was a little bit of an easier one, but thank you just the same. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move by Councilman Van Cherry, second by Councilwoman Havitz, all those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, this meeting is now adjourned.